Okay, good evening, everybody. Welcome to the June 15th Select Board meeting. It's nice we have a nice crowd here tonight, which feels good and we're maskless. And I will just, as normal, read our public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings but not necessarily participate. During meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. So, as usual, we have a few minutes set aside for public forum. Is anyone here tonight for public forum? Anybody want to speak? Anybody online, perhaps? It looks like there might be one person joining us online. No. Great. And then announcements. Ed, you said you had an announcement.
I'd like to thank everybody that attended Flag Day at the Pavilion last night. Thank the Cub Scouts, the Fire Department, and the Legion members. It was a nice ceremony to retire all the old American flag. So, thank you to everyone that participated.
Well, thanks to the Legion for doing that every year. That's great. Thanks, Ed. I would just announce, you know, I got a nice email from a resident tonight thanking our DPW crew for some work they did, and it was just really nice to hear from someone. And they really do do a great job, and this is a busy time of year for them. So, just wanted to also show my appreciation for what they've been doing. Nothing?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Okay, so first, we have some minutes to approve.
Yeah, I will make the motion to approve the Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes from May 17th and a Board of Selectmen's regular meeting minutes from June 2nd.
Second.
A motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
So, did you want to not do the executive session?
The May 17th.
Correct.
That's executive session. That should say executive session.
You don't want to approve those right now?
No.
Okay.
We'll just, it's part of the, yeah, we'll hold off on the.
Gotcha. Okay. So, our first order of business is a promotion tonight for Clint from our Police Department. Chief, did you want to?
Well, I typed up a letter, which I think you guys all have, explaining my reasons behind wanting to promote Sergeant Phillips to Lieutenant. It's well deserved. He's been with us, for townspeople might not know, he's been with us for just about 10 years. He was, he worked 3 to 11 for many years, and then when Tom retired, he came to days with me. While Tom was still here, he promoted him to Sergeant. Thought he deserved that role, and it was well deserved. And he's been a Sergeant for five years roughly as a Sergeant. He's taken on, in that time, he's taken on a ton of extra responsibilities, you know, managing our computers and getting all the new people squared away and trained and everything else. So, things that a normal command level position would do, he's been doing as a Sergeant. So, obviously, we're a small department, so it's not like we have multiple layers. So, he's well deserved. He's well-liked in town. He's more liked than I am. So, he deserves to be, he deserves to be up there, for sure. So, I hope you'll support him and support me in this promotion.
Well, I have nothing but great things to say about Clint. Very much, very grateful that you're on the department, and thank you, this is a great promotion.
I think the promotion is well deserved. I want to thank you for all your work for the Town of Hatfield. It is appreciated, and continue doing a great job out there.
If I may, and I'd also like to echo my colleagues' sentiments. Clint, Mike, I think it's a great choice. Clint, congratulations. I've had the good fortune, I guess, to actually have seen Clint in action. He wasn't pulling me over for speeding or anything. It was something a little bit different, but his demeanor and his expertise certainly shined through, shone through. So, again, thank you very much, and congratulations. I think it's very well deserved.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah? Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion that Sergeant Phillips be promoted to Lieutenant.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
None.
All those in favor?
Aye. Now, do we clap again? Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Did you want to say anything, Clint? Do you have a speech prepared?
No, absolutely. No, it's, it's been a joy working here for, like the chief said, almost the last 10 years. I still have quite a ways to go till I have retirement, and I hope to, hope to spend the rest of my career here. So, moving up through, it's been a pleasure.
Great.
Great.
Clint, thank you very much. Thank you, Leah.
All right, thank you much.
Thank you.
Back.
So, our second agenda item is a change of manager application for the Polish Club, which it looks like all the paperwork is in order here.
Yes, it has been reviewed, and I am recommending that the request for change of manager to Richard Ross be approved by the Select Board.
It's great that they're open again, too. It's really great. I have no problem with this. Here is here.
I am Richard Ross, and I am the Vice President of St. Cass Polish Club. I've been there for over 20 years, and I'm acting as a temporary bar manager, but I think that's going to go on for a while. However, I really appreciate, and the club really appreciates, for waiving certain fees. We've gone through some tough times. We didn't know if we were even going to open up, but we are. It's been a soft opening. The train's rolling. It's not rolling like we used to roll, but it's rolling, so we're trying to stay in business. We're 107 years old, but again, the Hatfield Polish Club appreciates for the cooperation of the Town of Hatfield and certain boards for waiving fees. We really do appreciate it, so thank you.
The Town of Hatfield also appreciates the Polish Club being over 100 years old. It's donated to many different organizations in town and different groups, and it's supported a lot of things with their scholarship programs and other activities. So, it's been a work on both sides. It was.
And it hurt us very much that we couldn't donate what we used to donate, but we will be back there. I guarantee you that.
Well, everybody certainly understands that. But as a board, you know, we thought it was really important to support those businesses through this, and we're certainly happy to support the Polish Club. Very happy to have you on board over there, Richard.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll make a motion to appoint Rick Ross, the manager of the Kazwakazmierz Lodge, 1965, which is known as the Hatfield Polish Club. Okay.
Second.
Think he's been there? It's not actually appointing him manager.
It's amending the license.
Yeah, it's amending the license.
To a change of manager, for a new change of manager.
Okay. So, you seconded?
I did second it, yes.
So, a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Richard, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Best of luck.
Yep, thank you.
Have a good night.
Fired back up over there.
Yep, as word gets out.
Yeah. It was quick and easy. So, we have, the next item is the liquor license. This is, I assume you're the gentleman here for that, and it's not supposed to be till 6:00, so we're going to skip over you a little bit, but then we'll come back when the time is right. So, we do have the request for entertainment license at Black Birch.
And we have the applicant.
Yeah, I think Michelle's online.
Yes, we've reviewed that. Michelle, who represents Black Birch, is joining the meeting. So, yes, every, everything is in order.
Well, and I can tell you, as a very close neighbor to Black Birch, that it's pleasant having them there, so I'm very happy about that. Very glad to have you as my, as my, as my neighbor.
Based on their application, Black Birch is, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, but you're looking for entertainment to be present between the hours of 12:00, noon, and 9:00 PM?
Yeah, I was just, I actually really didn't know what to put because it was only a specific time period, so I just kept it more broad and general, but I don't really know what an entertainment license entails or what it means.
Yeah, I'm just quickly looking at the statute because I didn't recall seeing any restrictions regarding times in there, and there isn't.
No, I mean, we have, well, and even if there were, that timeframe.
The local board can set that.
Yeah, but I mean, that timeframe is completely reasonable in terms of, you know, if there was anyone who could hear it or anything like that. That's totally reasonable timeframes.
I just have one question on this. Hours of the decision on site plan, which was dated 3/28/17, and from the planning board, it says hours of operation shall be restricted from 12:00 noon to 6:00 PM for the tasting room. Those hours do not apply to farm work. So, this, this license that, for entertainment, how does that relate?
Good question.
To the planning board decision from 2017? Not that I'm against this, just.
Right. Michelle, were you able to hear that question?
Yes, and can I add some input to that? We did have a planning board meeting more recently, and we talked about reviewing our site permit to change the hours if needed. So, the entertainment license really encompasses just the fact that we have this, it was a, an agreement we had with Signature Sounds previously, back in January, to have these concerts this big, this time of the year. But it really, we don't have anything else on our agenda for the remainder of the year. I did send that letter in to the Select Board about the timeframe and the concerts that we were having that generally ran to 8:30, but it only encompassed from now till the end of June. I mean, we don't have anything else planned above and beyond that, so that's why I just kind of gave general, broad hours based on the entertainment license, but it wasn't because of anything specific other than the current concert series we have with Signature Sounds.
So, you would still need to operate within the scope of your special permit in terms of the tasting room?
Yes, currently, yes. Yeah.
And that, I mean, as long as you've opened the discussions with the planning board to maybe adjust that for next season or later this year, whatever it is you have to do.
They talked about, you know, reviewing it basically sometime this summer if we needed to change that.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with this, as it is. Anybody have anything else?
Excuse me? No, I think it's, I think it's great. Thank you for coming forward, and as a musician, there's nothing like entertainment. So, I think it's awesome. I just, I had seen what Ed had, had mentioned, and I just want to make sure you're, there's no restrictions, I guess, for you guys. You know, I mean, I, I think the license should be noon to 10:00, personally, but I don't know if, if when we grant a license, if we put a time restriction on it, or if it goes by the town ordinances or bylaws as far as noise goes. So, I mean, if you're happy right now with 12:00 to 9:00 for a timeframe, Michelle, and as you're working with the planning board, if something needs to be tweaked, we can certainly tweak it. I don't know how my colleagues feel, or how you feel about it, Michelle, if.
I mean, the 12:00 to 9:00, like I said, it's just to cover anything that may change in the future, and I say 9:00 because I don't really want to entertain past 9:00.
Yeah, well, that's fine. Sure, yeah. No, I get it. Yeah, okay, then that's fine.
In respect to the neighborhood and, and, you know, traffic and so forth, so that's, you know, that's kind of why I chose those, that timeframe.
Sure.
In general.
Good. All right.
So, for now, the tasting room would not be open after 6:00, if there's an event?
No, no, right. We close our tasting room at 6:00, if not earlier, and actually Sundays is when we're having the concerts. We close at 5:00, and then the concert is after, is after, it starts at, well, the gate opens at 5:30, and then they, generally, the music runs from 6:30 to about 8:30 at the longest, the latest.
So, then that would put you in compliance with the restrictions, and then if you wanted to taste, tasting room opened up more, you go back to the planning board and talk to them that if we approve the till 9:00 for the entertainment license, maybe they can work out something that way.
Yeah, that's for them to work on, but for the, in terms of the, the entertainment license, everything's.
I just want to make sure that they're not in trouble with.
Right.
The restrictions that were imposed by the original agreement with the planning board in 2017, that's all.
Well, because here we are four years later, and things have changed, right? So, which is a good thing for Black Birch, so.
It's really great.
We had this discussion with the planning board. They are well aware of the timeframe that we are currently using for the concerts, and it's that it is, you know, beyond our regular permit hours that we have.
Okay. All right, well, I think it's great, and I wish you much success. So, I will make a motion to approve the application for the entertainment license at Black Birch Vineyard LLC, as presented, submitted.
I'll second that, and I just suggest going back to the planning board if need be.
Absolutely.
So, a motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michelle, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Michelle.
Thank you. We can, we can hear it from our area.
And I understand the fee was waived on that. Did I see that correctly as well?
Yes, those fees were waived for the current calendar year.
Thank you, I appreciate that as well.
You're welcome.
And just one other question. In terms of the entertainment license, is if, you know, I don't, I don't know what it encompasses or why, why there is an entertainment license. Would you be able to just give me some reference point in regards to it and why, why there is one?
Yeah, would you be able to connect with Marlene later this, tomorrow or later this week?
Yeah.
Because we have, you know, we, and we can present you with the, with the statute or the.
Right. Yeah, I was just going to say, I have the statute right in front of me, Michelle, if you'd like to jot that down, or you can call me tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, or email or some, is that?
I'll email you. I'll, I'll send you an email.
Okay, that would be great.
All right.
That way, I know what it means to have an entertainment license and what restrictions and so forth.
Sure, absolutely.
Great. Michelle, thank you.
All right, thank you. Good night.
Thank you, you too.
Okay, we still have a little time before our posted hearing for another liquor license.
Topic five?
What's that?
Topic five.
Yeah, we'll go to topic five, which is an application for an auctioneer's license. This is submitted by Dan Roucher, and this is an auction to be held on August 7th on Prospect Street, and this is at the estate of Paul Duga. And it does look like, it looks to me like everything is in order here, Marlene?
Yes.
Yeah, we've done work.
He has his auction, we have.
We've done work with Don in the past.
Generally, it almost seems like once a year, he, he has an auction.
I'll make a motion to approve an application for auctioneer's license by Don Roucher.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Ed, we can just keep going here. Well.
Next one is a.
I would, the next one is also a posted hearing, and then I don't think we have time to do topic seven. Do you want to go to topic eight? Yeah?
Could certainly do that.
Okay. So, topic eight is looking to have the Select Board rescind its, the town's state of emergency, which will be great. So, I don't know if either of you have any concerns or want to discuss this at all. This was a declaration we made on March 16th of 2020.
I mean, I have, I have no discussion on this. I guess we were, I thought there was some money coming down to possibly extend the reporting part of it. I don't know if that's part of this COVID.
No, no, so this is a result of a COVID team meeting about a week and a half, two weeks ago.
Yes.
And the recommendation was to follow the state's guidance.
Which expires today.
I was just going to say, the governor's declaration.
Or it expired last midnight.
Midnight, I think.
Yes.
And we knew we were having a meeting today, so we just figured we'd be in line with that. But that, so, yes, last March, we, we put this into effect following with, because of COVID and the guidelines, and it allowed us, I think to Ed's point, it allowed us to be, to access the various funding sources that would be available for COVID. I think, I don't want to speak for you, I think what you might be referring to is continuing on a go-forward basis, we will have, this, so the COVID team is somewhat being disbanded. It was the Select Board member, Chief of Police, Chief of Fire, Emergency Management Director, Marlene, Phil, Clint, and Board of Health. And at our last COVID meeting, we, we discussed that, given the circumstances, as we, two weeks ago, where we were and where we are today, that group would be disbanded, and any sort of COVID-related, what's a good word? Well, expenditures, but anything related to COVID would go through the Board of Health now. It's not going to be the COVID Committee. The Board of Health is in charge of COVID-related, like they are, like they are any sort of communicable or any town-wide issue.
I was reading something online today.
There is federal money.
That the governor may provide some money for like one person or the board to possibly continue possible tracing, possible this, but I, that's what I was referring to.
Point, and that's what will happen. They, the Board of Health, will continue to have somebody on staff that can access the various databases and continue providing databases such as Maven, the system for COVID. And the funding for those things, or anything else that comes up, is going to be through the Board of Health accessing that link that was on that email that we received.
Do we now have to vote to disband the committee?
I don't know that we really voted to create it, to be honest. It was like an ad hoc, it was kind of a.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't like you got, you took an oath for that committee.
No, no, it was.
Agreed that, you know, this group of people.
It was kind, I was the chairman at the time. It was the chiefs, as I said, the emergency management. There was no real official meeting, or excuse me, committee designation. Just kind of morphed into it because back in March, no, we didn't know what was going to happen, right? We thought it was a short-term thing, and here we are, 13 or 16 months later.
I know back then, we did discuss forming a committee, but I guess maybe we didn't officially make it a committee.
I think we just sort of pulled the, the people who had obvious roles and had them meet. And I will say, I really appreciate the work that Brian did on behalf of the board because that was a lot. And that everyone else did.
I was going to say, it was a team effort. It was a team effort, for sure.
Claudia, you know, Mike DeKoschak, Bob Flaherty.
Carrie, the fire chief, yeah, we did, they were all, all did an awesome job.
And there was a lot of work and meetings involved, and I feel like they very ably steered us through this.
They did.
Very, very, did a great job.
Well, they did, and once again, and it's been mentioned in the past, early on, for the first year or so, Carrie, Flaherty was really the, the go-to person for anything COVID-related as far as representing the Board of Health, representing the town, representing the systems that she had access to, notifying businesses, what have you, and she.
She took a great lead.
Yes, she did, so.
And she brought herself up to speed on everything, and it was constantly changing, and she just stayed up to date on everything and stayed in touch with us and kept us informed of the things we needed to know, and was a really great resource for townspeople, too. I know people called her a lot with questions about things, and I honestly don't know what we would have done without Carrie through this.
And she was a great resource for the schools. Not that everything she provided was, well, that's.
Well, thank you, everybody on the committee, once again. Your work has been totally appreciated by the Town of Hatfield, I believe, so.
I will happily make a motion to rescind the town's emergency, state of emergency declaration.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Phew, that feels good. So, we just have a couple of minutes. We probably don't have anything we can take up in that very small timeframe, correct, No, I don't think anything will.
I don't think so.
We can't really squeeze anything in here, in there.
It would be tough.
Oh, it does, it does say 6:01. Okay. Sorry, I'm looking at, you know.
Our clock's a little slow.
That thing back there. So, perfect. So.
Let's hit it.
The, we do have a posted hearing, excuse me, for 6:00 PM on a liquor license application for Old Mill Enterprises, which is the Old Mill Inn. Would you please come forward so that the microphone can pick you up? No, have a seat. Be comfortable, please.
Pull it, just pull it chair, yeah.
Just have a seat. Come on.
I'm Bill Woolbridge, and this is my business partner, Justin.
Hi, guys. Nice to see you.
Thank you, welcome to town. I'm hearing really exciting things about what's going on over there. Very exciting. So, again, it looks to me like everything is in order here. Yes.
And I want to thank Karen for that. She really walked and helped me through this, and she's great.
He needed a lot of support.
I do.
The technology, he's like a butt, what's in a butter?
Many years ago, I worked for the town and used to do these myself, and it's, it can be a lot of work. Great. Did you want to tell us anything about the business, or?
Tell you a little bit about it.
I'd love to hear.
You know, so we, Justin and I are old friends, or not that old, because he's young, and we had, we had talked about doing some different things, and we saw that opportunity, and we just loved the place, and so we thought we'd do it, go into it. We spent the first part of the year just kind of freshening it up. We, we, so we basically painted, put it, put in some new floors and kind of, kind of just freshened it up and put in some new furnishings. We, we, we've been, I've worked with Charlie Kornacki within the Health Department, and we talked to the building inspector and, and the chief of the Fire, Fire Department, and kind of got the go-ahead to run the business. So, we've been, we've been open, we've been kind of, we've been open since the middle of May, and it's been going really well. We've been getting a lot of interest and stuff and, and good feedback, and so our plan is really to run it as an inn. I think George was running it more as a bed and breakfast, and the kitchen facilities in the building are fairly limited, so we've been offering kind of a continental breakfast for the, for the guests and so forth. And we're, we're kind of getting through this first season, lack of a better way, kind of learning as we go and kind of seeing, I think, we want to take a step back in the late fall and see where things are and solidify our plans, but we'd like to be able to offer, you know, bottles of wine for our guests and those sorts of things, and so that's, hence the application.
So, is this, this just for the guests, or is this to have functions and invite people in, or have events, or banquet hall, or?
Initially, I think it's for our guests, which is what we're thinking about it, but we are having, you know, it's an interesting-sized property because there's 12 rooms, basically, so we've already had a couple of weddings through Quant, Quant, and the other venues here, and so people, wedding venues, they'll, they'll rent the entire building, and, and to the extent, we have one coming up where caterers coming in, and I guess they use their caterer's license, we would like to, events like that, to be able to, you know, to, to offer, offer alcohol and so forth. know, to offer alcohol and so forth. And again, as we go forward in the fall, I mean, yeah, I guess in the back of our heads, we'd like to eventually build a small bar in there and have, probably initially it would be events and so forth and at some point open it to the, to the public as we get our, our feet on the ground and get going. But we're, you know, we see it more as kind of like you would have in a hotel, it would operate probably, you know, till nine at night or something. We don't have any plans to have, to have a nightclub or to, you know, to have that kind of, that kind of thing. So mostly at this point, it would be, I guess I'm giving you both, both sides, but mostly at this point, we're thinking of our guests, but certainly open to how the business evolves.
And then as it evolves, I would assume you may need to be in touch with the planning board and I'm not sure what you have there for zoning and, you know, all of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
So that'll all be, okay. Anything else you want to add?
I think it's a beautiful property and we want to showcase it as best we can. So as we move forward, you know, we love to have the public in and not just travelers, but I think will be a great asset to the town, for sure. I mean, not that it wasn't already, but, you know, trying to, trying to enhance it as best we can and some fresh energy sometimes is good.
It's always been a little underutilized.
Yeah, for sure.
So this is a hearing. Is anyone present to speak to this matter at all or any questions or concerns? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I think it sounds great. I'd love a tour.
We'd love to show you.
Okay, so.
Want to close the hearing?
Oh, we do, we have to close the hearing first.
Everyone's all set.
If everyone's all set, we will go ahead and close the hearing. Do we have to make a vote to close it?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
I think you can.
Just stating for the record that it's closed.
So I will make, so the hearing's been closed, so I will make a motion to grant a new on-premise alcoholic beverage license to Old Mill Enterprises LLC, doing business as Old Mill Inn at 87 School Street, Hatfield, Massachusetts.
And since there's no objections, I will second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Just congratulations and the best of luck to you. I think it's great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, when we first, well, years ago, it was open somewhat as a restaurant, but it was a bring your own booze type thing, but they, they had a limited menu and that was kind of cool. And then when it went to a bed and breakfast or an inn only, we were a little bit disappointed since we lived in town, we didn't really need to stay there, you know.
Right.
But it is a beautiful property and I wish you much success.
Endless potential and really the potential to really sort of, you know, put Hatfield sort of on the map in a different way than we've ever been before.
And if you get a chance, go to the library, there's a book that gives the history of that property, how it was a grist mill and how it was a machine shop and it was shattuck arms.
Yeah, it's been all sorts.
They used to sell, make guns for the Civil War and stuff, so.
Just that we went to the historic society and they actually shared all those old glass slides and photos. And so we had a bunch of those printed and they lined the hallways upstairs and all that. So we, when we toured, we talk about the history of Hatfield and make sure everyone's kind of connected with that whole experience because you can still see it and feel it and, you know, the, the wheels are still there and you're laying in bed and you're looking up and you're looking at like 150 years of history, you know, it's kind of a cool place.
And then in more recent history, there was a coffee shop in there. Remember that, Susan? And it was good. It wasn't there very long, but it was really cute inside, so that was the last time I was in there was to go to the coffee shop.
We'll invite you all over.
It'd be nice.
It's a cool, cool place.
I can look at it.
Well, great, thanks, thanks for investing in our community here.
Yes.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Good luck, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Okay, so now our next, actually posted hearing is 6:30, so we could probably move on with, do you think we could, we could get the employment contracts done now?
Yes, we could do that. Oh, yeah, we have plenty of time. The Select Board met with, with those employees that have employment agreements and negotiated the employment agreement, agreed to terms, and now you have before you the employment contracts. Effective July 1, these are all three-year agreements and the Board just needs to vote to approve those employment agreements.
Would, do you need them to be done individually?
Probably wouldn't hurt.
There's four of them.
Yeah, let's do them individually. I think that's.
Or at least rattle all four of them out.
I was just going to say, in the motion.
Yep, okay.
State who they're for.
Sure. So I will make a motion to approve the employment contract as negotiated with the Board of Selectmen for Town Administrator Marlene Machansky, Police Chief Mike Dukoschak, Fire Chief slash EMD Director Bob Flaherty, and Building Inspector Kyle Scott.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'm just going to take a minute to sign these.
Do I do number nine?
Yeah, let's do nine. That's you, Phil. Do you want to come on up to the?
Hot seat.
So we have a water abatement. Do you need?
I was waiting for you to say something.
You're waiting for me?
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, so you have two things on the agenda for a DPW. One is the water abatement for Straits Road, per our discussion that we had had. I recommend the abatement.
Okay, I don't have any questions.
I'd just like to add that the request for the abatement, the amount due on, on the account is less than that.
Okay.
So I just want to make sure that the amount.
Oh, I see, there's a note, okay.
Ode to date. So I'll make a motion to approve the abatement at 76 Straits Road for the amount that's owed to date.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, and the second DPW report is for the generator at the wastewater plant. I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee because this was an emergency, to say the least, with the generator failing down there.
Yeah.
And to approve the funding and same with Eric, to execute the contract so fast. It's up, it's installed, it's running, no problems. So I really want to, I appreciate all the help that everybody, you know, for everybody that was involved in that, Marlene, we pushed the contract through, awarded it.
An emergency procurement for that.
And, I mean, the company was great. It's installed, like I said, and it's up and running, so.
Is there a maintenance contract with that?
There is not. And that's something we're looking at for all the generators.
Well, I was just going to say, maybe that is something we should look at.
Yeah, I mean, we went through it the other day and I think there's nine generators now in town. So I'm, we're looking at a couple of different companies for a maintenance contract to get some pricing.
Yeah, because the way I understand generators, some of them have their own software that's involved and it's proprietary software. So I'm not sure, out of the nine generators, which ones may have proprietary software, which means somebody, the company has only access to that computer to make changes.
Yes, yes. You know, as you know, there's, you know, there's a couple of companies only involved, so. But like I said.
You know, it's really, it's really an important thing to do, though, because, oh.
Well, I think, I think what we should do is get, get the list or what have you of all the generators, see where we stand. I mean, I'm assuming, since this is brand-new, there's got to be some sort of a warranty at a minimum, but yes, to Ed's point, we need to, you know, have something upfront.
Yeah, I mean, then you take the one at the elementary school that, you know, is older and, you know, could catch on fire and was replaced. And then, you know, now we have one at the highway garage, you have one at the fire station. You know, there's a bunch of them around now, so.
Right.
But one at the elementary school, isn't that so old we couldn't get parts for it, right? Yeah.
You've done good.
The payroll together.
You know, and with the, with the wastewater, you know, with the master plan, you know, they're talking about generators at the pump station, so, you know, it could be a bigger task than what's out there now, but we are surely looking into the maintenance program.
Yeah, I think that's wise. Okay. Is that all you have?
That's all I have. Route 5 is going well. Again, thanking everybody for, you know, the change order for the water. They have strung out all the eight-inch pipe. We have the 12-inch pipe in stock. They had started today down towards the culvert where they put in some wells for water to pump the water out, so. I mean, it's moving along. I mean, once they get started, I think it'll go pretty good. They installed the manhole at the bottom of the old water main where Rockaway has the option to come in, but if they're going to, it's still up in the air, but at least it's there for them.
The water's in first or is it the other way?
What's that?
What's going in first, the water?
The water's going in first, yes. The only part of the sewer I think he's going to put in prior to putting the water is from Chestnut Street South where the 12-inch is going, because the 12-inch might be in his way. So he's going to probably put the sewer in first and then put the 12-inch water main in after. We're still discussing that.
Okay. So when you chance me, send me a copy of the signed change order, too.
Yes.
Second one.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
And the other thing is tomorrow I will have the documents from CEI for the Phase Two contract.
I mentioned there's a clerk on this job, right?
There is a clerk on the job.
I think it'd be nice if maybe once in a while the clerk comes in and gave a update.
Sure.
So that the town knows that we have somebody out there besides you and the town protecting this project.
Alex is.
A good idea.
He's been there daily, so, you know, we have meetings just about every day, there's a question or two that arises. You know, he's a little green to the area, so, you know, but he'll be okay.
Good.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
Good job.
I think we have time to do the appointments.
I was just going to suggest that.
Come on up.
I just want to make a suggestion. And if you look at the annual appointments and the yellow highlights, a lot of those are the Select Board's representatives to different other boards. So if you put this vote after your reorganization, then you can just vote all those, too.
Oh, that's, that's right. Well, unless we don't think any of these are going to change.
Well, yeah, but still, you're not doing your reorganization until it's like putting the cart before the horse.
But if, but if, but if we're still going to keep, regardless of the reorganization, we're just still going to have me be capital planning and Brian be the regional transportation, then what does it matter?
I think, I think Lydia's point is, in case it does change, we're making the appointments prior to, I mean, if we're just going to keep everything the same, which is fine with me, but.
I mean, you could, you could vote that part of the reorganization right now and do that, it's just technically you've got to do your part first.
So the ones in yellow are all of us, right? Yeah.
A lot of them are yours.
I mean, I think, on an average year, that might, but I'm looking at this, I don't think we need to really make any changes to these highlighted. I mean, unless one of you really wants to be on capital planning or, you seem to enjoy the emergency management stuff.
It's fine, yeah. PV, PC and.
Okay.
Yeah.
And those meetings.
Thank you, I understand where you're coming from, but.
Coming from, but I don't, I think, looking at this, I, when I looked at this before, I thought, well, we're probably all going to just stick with the same.
You guys are fine and you're making the appointment and.
I mean, I like being on the capital improvement.
Your motion will have to change slightly.
Right.
Or we can do reorganization now, too. Do it all at once.
Yeah, I'll do it all, we'll do this. So why don't we just, and you'll correct me if I'm wrong, right, Lydia?
Yes, I will.
If. I move to make all of you appointments with their respective terms as indicated on the list presented by the Assistant Town Clerk. Right?
Good.
We don't need anything about, yeah.
So a motion's been made in second. Any further discussion?
Nope.
But there are a couple, I guess you're going to have to specify the ones that aren't you. Like the plant, like the planning board hasn't done their reorganization.
Right, so excluding where there has been no designee identified yet. Like the school committee has not identified who would be on capital planning.
Right, the school committee, but I think.
I see what you're saying, right.
Planning board was Mike Poshak. Except any of the ones that aren't selectmen, because there's some school committee ones, finance committee.
Yeah.
So there are some highlighted yellow ones.
Yeah, so I would exclude, exclude those. Because that's outside of our, what we appoint.
Right, right.
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah. Brian makes, moves, my, Brian.
Brian moves what Lydia just said. You know, if something so simple has turned, every year, we got to, we have to go through it three.
If everyone had their reorganization meeting before June 15th, we'd be all set, but it just doesn't happen.
So, I mean, the election was a year, a year, a month ago.
As these come in, you'll get us so that we can take those particular positions up.
Right, as they come in, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I made the motion.
And Ed seconded it.
Oh, okay.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have a question, though.
Thank you.
So this is just for the appointed positions, correct? Now, the finance committee is appointed by the moderator and the finance committee's on this list.
And he would make an, a.
Right, he's Sean.
Sean Barry, but I haven't talked to, I haven't talked to him about who he's, wants to be on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Right.
So I don't know his either.
I mean, I think that would just naturally be excluded from our vote because we don't have control over that committee. We don't have the authority.
Well, no, you don't, but the finance committee has a member that's supposed to be on the Capital Planning Improvement Committee.
Well, but that's what we were just talking about before, that once they report back, so.
Right, exactly.
Okay.
So that's one of the ones we excluded.
Okay. So.
Okay.
Sounds great. Thank you, Lydia. We still have some time before this 6:30. I just want to make sure we didn't skip anything here. Marlene, do you want to start getting into your administrator's report?
We'll be glad to. First matter of business here is for you is a contract for legal services with William Solomon, Attorney Solomon, represented the town in the last go-around negotiations, I should say, regarding the contract with Comcast. And I am recommending that we, that the Board approve those services and the agreement for services actually, I noticed, has, has my name, so if the Board finds that acceptable, I'll be glad to, to sign it. So he is proposing a cap of up to $9,000. Just want to mention that we do have a cable TV enterprise fund and we receive approximately $60,000, a little more than $60,000 a year currently from Comcast. And so this, the 10-year contract will be expiring, I believe, later, no, next year, next year.
I do know that the cable manager wanted to make some comments.
Yes, he, and John received his proposal as well. I haven't, we haven't discussed it, but...
Well, my comment is, when we negotiate this contract, we may be able to negotiate some capital improvements to this building if there were space for me to go.
Excellent. Yes.
Other cable stations have done that, but they're busy.
Right.
But if the board decides to find an area of the building...
Studio, yeah.
That might need to be renovated, maybe a bathroom on the second floor, that might be able to be paid for out of our grant.
Okay. So, it would be, you could put John in touch with...
Yes, he and I have discussed that, actually, yes.
I think your input is fair, is welcome, and important.
Well, I would, I would, yeah, propose, recommend, just, I think what you're saying is that John be involved in those negotiations.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, I would agree.
Yep.
And this attorney did do the last contract.
Okay.
And to my understanding, everything worked out well. The town was pleased with his services?
Well, and again, I think it's important to remember that sometimes services sound like a lot of money that you're paying for upfront or now, but in reality, this is for a $600,000 contract, right? I mean, ultimately, if we get $60,000 a year, we do this once every 10 years, so Comcast is gonna be giving us roughly, unless things change, $600,000, so we're paying an attorney to, you know, that's what I mean, but at a minimum. So, so that this, you know...
Where's the highest tier of what you can get off the bill? You can negotiate a capital on the bulk of the bill.
Right.
Then let's give it a shot.
Let's do it.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so I see there's, you can sign that, so, because there's nothing in the signature, so, you just need a vote.
Consensus or a vote, or...
Yes, okay.
Please.
I mean, right now, where cable TV is out of the closet over here, so...
Yeah.
If we can get some money from Comcast...
The small studio.
...during the negotiations to help make a space, it just makes sense.
Yeah.
And it would be really nice, I would really like to get to a point where more of our meetings are televised like this, specifically school committee.
Well, the school committee has started meeting here.
Oh, good.
And, as you know, there's other boards and committees that, that meet, use this room as well, so we're, there's gonna be conflicts, for sure.
Well, we can work that out.
We will.
We'll figure that out. That's, that's easy enough. Okay. Excellent. Very good.
I will make a motion to accept a fee agreement for legal services by and between the town of Hatfield, Massachusetts, and Attorney William Solomon for Comcast cable license renewal.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Marlene, we still have five minutes, if you wanna pick something from your report.
Well, so, we really have three minutes, just, if we're going by real time.
Oh, right. I'm sorry.
That's okay, I'm just, I mean, if there's something quick, we certainly can do it, just...
Okay. About the building, the building development, building developments, update report from, from our building inspector, you should have a copy in your packet from, locating mine, but I'm sure it's here somewhere.
Yeah, here it is.
Okay, so periodically, you know, Building Inspector Kyle Scott will send an update as to the progress of any development in town. And Tree Works, as you, the board does know, has been approved by the Cannabis Control Commission to, to open, so they are, they're, they're operating as we speak.
Good.
River Valley Growers at 586 Main Street, permits have been given for construction. Center School Condos are, are coming along, and I believe they may have furnished a condo there.
Oh, wow.
They're promoting, you know, trying to sell those.
Oh, interesting, okay.
So, yeah, they're coming along quite well. There's a new house going up on Old Stage Road, a new house, and, and these houses that I'm going to reference are, are probably set to be complete in the fall. Old Stage Road, Prospect Street, and Main Street, new houses. Scapes Builders, they're in the process of starting the permits, request for permits, and they're looking at a mixed commercial project. Stible Eltron, they, they're, they're planning to develop property on Route Five. I spoke with Erica Geese several weeks ago, and they are, you know, in the process of doing the design for, for that property.
Part of the Mass Grant, too, right?
Yes, it is.
Yes, of job creation.
Ready to build, provided the grant went through and all that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, so is Scapes.
It was two, a part, I think, yeah, part of an application that we had submitted a few years ago, right?
Right. You're right, it did this, it was inclusive of Scapes.
And Full-Tile Autobody be located to a renovated space on West Street.
I've seen that they're, they look fully operational over there. I mean, this is really encouraging that, you know, there's, there's two marijuana businesses, three brand-new houses, the condos, and three commercial projects coming off of a pandemic is...
That's pretty good.
It is pretty good. It's pretty good. That's great. Well, we appreciate Kyle's update.
Do you need that back? No, keep it with you. Thank you. Okay.
Okay, so, we're right at 6:30, Marlene, so we will go ahead and have this public hearing, the Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Is there anything specific we need to do to open this?
I'd just like to, well, as the chair, if you'd like to go ahead and open it and welcome Mimi Kaplan is Senior Planner at Pioneer Valley Planning, and she's been working with a team of town officials on updating our current hazard mitigation plan.
Welcome, Mimi.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, okay. Yeah, thank you to the board for inviting me to present about the Hazard Mitigation Plan update, which is currently in progress. I was going to share a slideshow. I'm going to try to do that right now.
Well, only we're gonna see it, though.
Yeah, so, anyone here will not be able to see it. I'm sorry. There it is.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I hadn't realized that when we agreed, when we decided to do this.
Well, we have them.
I have these. Does anyone wanna follow along the slides? No? Okay. It's okay, Mimi, go ahead.
Can everybody with a computer see this?
Yes.
Okay, so, the Hazard Mitigation Plan update is currently in progress. This is the first of two required public meetings, so I'm gonna tell you, just explain to you about the process and where we're at. I'm just trying to, I've not used GoToMeeting before, so forgive me here. Okay. Did everyone still see the presentation?
Yes.
Yes.
John, anyone who watches this at home can see it?
Yeah.
Okay. And it'll obviously be part of the recording. Okay. It looks fine, Mimi, we can see everything.
Okay, for some reason, I'm not getting the presentation mode, but, okay, so, hazard mitigation, according to FEMA, is any sustained action taken to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property from natural hazards. So, some examples of this are limiting development in risk-prone areas, retrofitting structures to protect them from various risks, drainage and flood control projects, fire safety education. So, those are just some examples of what hazard mitigation projects can be. Mitigation is part of the emergency management cycle, so a town mitigates in order to prepare for hazards, and then responds and recovers when natural hazards occur, and then continues mitigation and preparedness efforts. So, mini, hazard mitigation is a little bit broader in scope and generally done in advance of preparedness, although they're similar. It means planning ahead and putting structures in place in order for the town to prepare effectively for hazards. Communities with updated, so, these are some of the benefits of hazard mitigation. Communities with updated and approved HMPs are eligible to apply for hazard mitigation funds from FEMA. It's less expensive to mitigate for disasters than to have to clean them up. Plans help communities use their limited resources more effectively. And finally, hazard mitigation makes communities more resilient, which is especially important as we face increased challenges with climate change. So, just briefly, the planning process for hazard mitigation plan, the update committee meets six times, we've already met four times, and holds two public meetings. PVPC, meaning me, prepares the draft plan, and it's finalized based on public input. The plan is submitted to MEMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, revised as needed, and then submitted to FEMA. It's again revised as needed. The Board of Selectment adopts the plan, and then it's given final approval by FEMA. It's good for five years, and at that point, the town would be eligible to apply for funding for various projects. So, these are the participants in the Hazard Mitigation Plan. Updating, Update Committee, so, thank you to everyone who's participating. Very appreciative of the time and effort that they are putting in. The components of the Hazard Mitigation Plan include identifying and assessing hazards the town faces, and assessing the vulnerabilities, so the impact on property, buildings, and residents, especially vulnerable populations. They also include identifying critical infrastructure in town, assessing the town's mitigation capabilities, and existing mitigation strategies, proposing new mitigation strategies, and establishing a schedule for implementing those strategies. So, we're, we've been working on all that. We're getting probably close to the end. So, the committee assessed the natural hazards for Hatfield, as well as the risk index rating for each of these hazards. So, what you're looking at now is from, is a table from the plan. So, the risk index rating that you see on the right-hand column is based on the frequency of occurrence, the location of occurrence, meaning how large of an area it would impact, and also the level of the impact, so how severe the impact would be of the hazard. The committee increased the risk index rating for both wildfires and droughts to a three or medium risk from a four, which is a low risk from the previous plan, due to their increased frequency and probability of occurrence. They also decreased the risk index rating for earthquakes to a four from the three, for the same reason, the, a lower probability of occurrence. Excuse me, the committee inventory the critical facilities and services in Hatfield, so a critical facility being defined as a building structure or location that is vital to response effort for a hazard, maintains an existing level of protection from hazards, or would create a secondary disaster if a hazard were to impact it. So, all of these facilities and services, as well as populations in need of protection, were what the committee identified. The committee also assessed the town's mitigation capabilities, which, among other capabilities, include zoning ordinances and bylaws that mitigate risks, such as these shown here. Town plans, such as the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan, and the Open Space and Recreation Plan, National Flood Insurance Program enrollment, there are currently 34 flood insurance policies in force, requiring burn permits, fire safety education, regular tree trimming, a strong emergency communication system, and a cooling and heating center at the EMS building. The committee is currently in the process of evaluating existing mitigation strategies, repriorit, rep, sorry, reprioritizing the strategies and adding new strategies for the updated plan. So, the next steps are, the group will meet two more times, sorry, I'm not sure whether to call it a committee or a group, I know it's not technically a committee. We'll meet two more times in July and August. We will, I will finalize the draft plan. Draft plan will be released at another public meeting to be held in late summer or early fall. The plan will be submitted to MEMA, and then after it's revised, submitted to FEMA, Select Board will adopt it, and FEMA will approve it, and then the town will be eligible to apply for. And that is it, so thank you, I appreciate your attention, and if anybody has any questions or comments, you could share them now.
I appreciate the presentation and the information, it was really great. Does anyone have any questions for Mimi? Or it was pretty straightforward.
I'm trying to figure out how to stop sharing here.
Great, thank you, and thank you to the, the people who are working on this, some of whom are sitting here tonight. We appreciate that very much.
Yeah, it's been an excellent team effort, and, you know, quite a bit of input from police and fire.
There's a lot to think about. I like that we have, you know, historical items and file records and things like that on there, I mean...
Florida Health has been representing those meetings as well.
Yeah, great. There's no action required? That was just an informational piece?
No, just...
Okay. Perfect. Mimi, thank you.
Thank you, Mimi.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Yeah.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, you as well.
Thank you, Mimi.
So, now we can just sort of resume, right, where we were?
We can.
We jumped around a little bit.
I'd just like to add that, you know, the, the efforts of this, well, for the consulting portion of updating this plan is being funded by the state. We had applied for a grant last year, so I wanted to...
Thank you.
Mention that again.
Right. So, looking back here, we did the cable, the legal services for the cable renewal. The FY 2022 pay rates, we're not ready to do that yet, are we?
We, yes, we are.
We are.
All those, right, so that's based on...
Sharon's jumping up there.
So, we're gonna do then with just the COLA for now, because you're not meeting until July.
Right, they include any adjustments that have been approved by the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee and the COLA, which was approved in the budget at town meeting. The 2.3%, there's a group of us, we're, we're looking at that in meeting with the department, so that will come later, as Sharon said.
So, we'll have another vote. If you meet before July 1, we can make it happen for the July 1 pay.
Right.
But if it doesn't, we'll retro them back to July with whatever, but at least we can get the COLAs in, and I can do all the paperwork I need to do.
Okay, I guess I was confusing my...
I know, two steps, so that way we can, you know...
Yeah, we knew we would be ready to include that and that additional money.
Well, I appreciate this spreadsheet. I don't have any questions or anything about that, that's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Agreed, yeah.
So, just, the board would vote to set those, you're setting the pay rate score.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we already, okay, we take so many votes with Finance Committee and everything else, but that's fine. So, I will make a motion to approve the fiscal, the departmental pay rates as presented.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? I just wanna add, just for, for people at home, this is just a 2% COLA that was...
For employees.
For employees granted during the budget process.
Correct.
Yep.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
White Rock Trail, Marlene?
Yes, update. So, you know, some time ago, we had received a notice from an abutter up there, Mr. Michael Aquadro, just notifying the town, well, he had, he had posted no trespassing signs on trees, which we believe to be town property. And Mark DeLa, and I believe it was Garrett, right, from the DPW, met Mr. Aquadro out there. Mr. Aquadro had his attorney present, and there is clearly, I guess, a discrepancy in, in, in the deeds, the deed reference. And so, Mark DeLa and I had, had discussed this, and we, we feel that the property should be surveyed, and it appears that Mr. Aquadro's attorney would be willing to share half the cost of that survey.
Seems fair.
Do we know how much a survey costs?
No, not right now, we don't. Currently, we haven't done that yet.
I hate to approve something without knowing at least, more or less, what it costs.
I mean, I guess I would approve looking into getting a survey.
Oh, absolutely, we, we would look into it before committing to, to it.
Okay. I mean, that makes sense, we should...
I think it needs to be cleaned up.
They should know what they own, we should know what we own, particularly if he's, you know, we wanna make sure, if he's allowed to post those signs, then he should be allowed to post them. If not, then we need to get to the bottom of that, too.
I had a worry that this would come out to a survey, because that's what it sounded like, so it sounds like we're gonna need to do it anyways, so...
Right.
And, and since we're splitting costs, it's, that's not bad.
And there is no survey, we, we don't, I mean, I don't know how, this particular property, how long the town has owned that, there was no survey done at that time? In other words, was this land that was, we recently, I know there was, back when I was on the board, board before, we acquired some land up there for water, you know, preservation and protecting the reservoir and the aquifer. and protecting the reservoir and the aquifer and all of that. I don't know, am I even in the same realm, land-wise?
Yeah, we keep adding to it.
Yeah, I just didn't know when we acquired it, if there was anything already there.
Yeah, land that's...
Could request the funding through the community preservation. I mean, they've, they've acquired property through that, so.
Good idea.
It's been acquired in conservation restrictions.
I just, my question is, are we sure we don't already have surveyed that property?
To the best of my knowledge, and, yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I, I think, just for people at home, because we have a note in front of us, so the deeds reference the junction of two stone walls. So you can see that that's, I mean, I don't know how many are up there, but I mean, there's probably more than two. So you've got, we're, we're looking at one and the Aquadros are looking at another, and we, we need the survey. I would, I would suggest to get to the bottom of this once and for all.
Yep. Okay, so let's pursue that. You don't need a vote from us, it's just...
Just, yep.
Yep.
Instruction guidance to do that. We'll pursue that.
And it looks like the last item under your report, Marlene, is this revised reimbursement procedures?
Right, yes. So there were some small minor changes, and then I had recalled that the previous, a previous meeting, prior meeting, we had reviewed that, the reimbursement procedures, and there was some, there was a request made by, by Brian to look into adding language to the HR policy regarding travel reimbursement. And I looked at the HR policy, there is some language currently in there regarding travel reimbursement, but I just want to explore that a little more. So I just thought it would be best, rather than bring it to the Board for those smaller items we changed to say...
Excuse me? Yeah, well, I think part of the, part of my concern was to just go on Google Maps and say, oh, Google Maps says it's 20 miles, when by the time you have to drive, or if the road was constructed, you know, to rely on that as the source versus the employee's odometer, I had a problem with. Because, for example, you might want to go to Hadley now, and Google Maps will say go down Damon Road, but we all know that's under construction, right? So you might come down Main Street and go 160, you know what I mean? So you've, you've still traveled on business.
Right.
But if you had to rely on Google Maps to do it, you weren't, you wouldn't get reimbursed properly. So, so that was, that was one of my concerns. The other thing I would ask, actually, it's number one. So I understand that the town does not pay a sales tax, the town of Hatfield, you know, as a municipality.
Correct, we're tax exempt.
But if somebody goes and purchases something on behalf of the town and gets, and for some reason gets, because they're putting on their personal card, right?
Right.
So, and, and does have to pay sales tax on something, I would suggest that that employee gets, because it's on behalf of the town, gets reimbursed the full amount that they just paid. Whether we pay the tax or not, we're not the ones buying it. An employee's buying it on our behalf.
I understand that. However, we, that's why they should use vendors that the town uses.
Well, this would obviously be in terms of an emergency or something, right?
Or travel. I, I mean...
Well, the town has never paid sales tax.
Marlene, I'm not suggesting we do, and I would imagine it's probably pennies. But I'm just saying, if I go out to purchase a chair on behalf of the town of Hatfield and it costs me $300, 6% sales tax, another $18, I want my $318. I don't want 300, I want 318 because that's what I paid to get the chair for my office that I was approved by the town of Hatfield.
I don't think the town accountant can legally do that.
Well, I beg to differ, but that's, I, I'm just throwing it out there.
Legally, and please, please take it as that, too. Legally, we cannot do that. We can't pay the sales tax because, and, and part of the problem is lots of people are buying things that they don't need to, they're not just using it for an emergency, which is how this all came up to begin in the first place, was that they're not, and I'm happy to say, we now have Amazon available, so, which is now tax-free. So we've now offered another vendor to everybody in town to use that they're not going to have to pay the sales tax, which I know was a big deal for the 350th in particularly. A little late for you guys, but I did make the steps forward so we have another vendor so that we can try to reduce the amount of purchasing that's not through a vendor that we, so people don't have to pay sales tax. Because unfortunately, that's a Massachusetts law that we're not supposed to reimburse it. Because we're really not supposed to encourage people to buy things with their own money. I get your frustration. I've had to buy things before.
I'm not frustrated because I don't buy anything, I just think it's unfair.
Yeah, I mean, I think the point of the, when you read the policy, it's clear, we're trying to reduce this happening at all.
Yeah.
Okay, so employees should not just normally be going out and buying taxable or non-taxable items. It should be going through proper channels. But I guess, I, I agree with Brian in the case, I mean, if we have some kind of, you know...
Until you spend it.
Some kind of emergency situation, and Mike has to run to Foster Farah to get something that's obviously going to be taxable if you're buying it there, he shouldn't have to eat the tax on it.
No.
They're, they're a vendor.
Yeah, we have an archive there, we have an archive at ICA.
And I real, I realize that, and I know this isn't even going to come up that often.
Yeah.
But the, the, the point is, when I pay out of my pocket to get something, I should be reimb, on behalf of the town, I should get reimbursed for everything I just spent. I mean, so you can say the town can't pay sales tax. Well, they're not paying the sales tax, they're reimbursing an employee who just outlaid the money. So that's, that would be my argument.
I understand, because I don't think it's fair, you know, a person who has paid that...
I, I, you know what I would say to the auditor? They went out and bought this on behalf of the town, and they're our employee, and we're reimbursing them for every cent they spent on behalf of their employer. And then the auditor...
On the other hand, having that in there, that it's not reimbursable, should also cut down on employees who just say, hey, I'm at Staples and I want to buy this thing.
Well, I don't think it happens that often anyways, I would hope.
If we use Michael as an excuse, we, Michael could come to me and get the tax-exempt certificate and bring it to said business, and that's what I have petty cash in my office for.
Now, that's exactly...
There are other ways where, to work around it. It's, that, those situations...
But if it's an emergency, you're out snowblowing, you got to go do something, whatever. I don't want to beat this dead horse.
But those emergencies are, I live a mile from here, like, there's ways around it.
Sharon, the middle of a snowstorm and somebody has to go get something, so.
I, I guess...
I'm not going to get into an argument about it.
Well, we are.
If somebody outlays money on behalf of the town, they get the money back. That's the end of the story.
But I mean, when I worked for the state, we'd had a letter, if we went to a vendor, and we'd just show them that we're tax exempt.
Supposed to be an emergency, right?
If it's an emergency.
And that, yeah, if it's an emergency, you don't have time necessarily to come get a letter, or come get petty cash, or do whatever. That's my point.
I mean, I was, I was put to the fire to make sure, because if, if I paid sales tax, I had to go back to that vendor and get the sales tax. So, I mean, we had a letter, a tax-exempt letter that can be shown to where you're purchasing the items to show that we're tax exempt.
Right, which is why we have preferred vendors, which I get. This is, this is supposed to be the extenuating circumstance.
A lot of people wanted to save money.
To your point, if, like, the $318, if the $300 can come out of a, can come out of your budget, the $18 can come out of petty cash or something of that nature, so that the employee is fully reimbursed.
Well, that I can't do. That would, again, be marked on the audit, is that we're, they check, I mean, I've sat with the auditors on this exact topic, that they check to make sure there are reimbursements that we're not doing it. So I hope with Amazon being one of them, you can get things prime, we can solve some of it. Because our department heads, I appreciate, are trying to do the right thing, and Mike's an example of this, who came to me with this and said, I can save money if I buy it from Amazon versus WB Basin. So I said, well, let's get with Amazon and figure out how to do that. So that now you can buy through Amazon, save the money for your department, save the town money, get what you need to get, and still not have to pay sales tax and all of those things. So hopefully, I mean, one of the biggest ones is a library buys a lot of stuff that gets reimbursed, because they're buying these unusual items for crafts for kids. Well, they would like it for Amazon. So I said, well, the school's doing it, let's figure out how to do it. So I did it, and now everybody's got a setup and good to go. So I, I get your frustration.
I like it.
Think that we're going to use local businesses over Amazon whenever possible, yeah. Like RK Miles and, yeah.
But our, an example would be, oh, I, this is one of the ones that got brought to me. The fire chief came to me and said, I can go to a local business in Deerfield and buy some lights for the fire truck. He can, on Amazon, get them and do both fire trucks for the price of one set of lights from Deerfield. And so that's where he's like, I need to be fiscally responsible with the money I've been entrusted with. So it's a catch-22 of the back and forth. I mean, so I don't control the departments, I just gave another alternative because I was asked, so that, in particularly, help with the sales tax, too. So I'm trying.
I think that the message here is that what we're trying to do is diminish the amount of times employees are purchasing things with their own money and looking for reimbursements.
And I do have petty cash, so if there is something, you know, I am here for that option, so, thank you.
I, I would suggest that after we go through this and approve it, if it's not already, that we just send it out again to all the department heads to share with their employees. And it's number, it happens to be number one on here, that you will not be reimbursed for sales tax.
I mean, if there's a vendor out there that you want to use, there's just a form that the vendor has to fill out, they become a vendor, then you can use that vendor.
Right.
Exactly, and I do the most of that paperwork. I mean, you've sent me stuff, Phil's sent me stuff, I can open accounts at a variety of places, so. If there's some need that we have that I don't know about, let me know.
Amazon will be in town anyways, dropping something off at my house, probably, so they can swing by.
Me, too. They go there daily.
So did you need a, was this just an update for us, Marlene? Are you looking for...
Just an update, I'm not asking you to approve it at this time.
Thank you. So, Marlene, it looks like that is the end of your report?
It is.
Are we taking up either of the old business matters?
Continued old business, Topic 12. I think that's where we are next, right?
Yes.
Yep.
So you, you have in your packet the order of taking for the easements related to the water and sewer infrastructure project on Route 5, and the original is in the signature packet. Included is a copy of the, the plan. And I would ask that...
Excuse me.
Okay, and the layout has not changed. So just looking at some communication that we received late this afternoon, just to make sure that...
Phil, do you want to speak to this at all?
As you said, you have the project with the...
Okay.
Voted.
Yeah, that's what I had believed, okay.
Twice.
Just wanted to confirm that. All right. So I would ask that the Board vote to accept the order of takings with respect to the Route 5 Water and Sewer Improvements Project.
I will make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to approve the order of taking in connection with the Route 5 Water and Sewer Improvement Project.
Second.
And we will file these, and we'll also include a certified copy of the, of Article 12, a 22 voted at the annual town meeting this year.
Attorney McLaughlin? Yes.
As you know, it sounds like a broken record. Represent Ms. Berry, 34, 36 West Street. Is this the order before the Board, the one that was, I saw this morning from your attorney? Has it been changed since this morning? Do we know?
There hasn't been any change.
Okay, thank you. All right. Then we just want to say that we still have an objection to the votes that were taken for the procedures regarding the votes, and that the order today, we believe, is not even in conformity with the votes that were taken. I do want to say that our engineer has spoken to your engineer just at 4, 5 o'clock today, so we were hoping that when he speaks with my client, maybe things could be mitigated to a certain extent, but she hasn't even spoken to him yet. They just spoke today. We also want to reiterate that our engineer has said that your, the amount that you took by way of a temporary easement is not anywhere near what you would need, and where, there is no license to go beyond the temporary easement, and that, you know, so please try to stay within the temporary easements, we intend on getting them marked out. So we would object and hope that the Board doesn't go through with the taking based upon the votes. We contend they're purported votes, we disagree with the procedures that were undertaken, and that what I saw this morning, we believe, is not in conformity with the votes that were taken. I'm sure you're still going to vote for it anyways, but I just wanted to get that on the record, and maybe when we confer with our engineer regarding his conversations with your engineer, things could change, but as of now, we're still contesting this, and we may still have the option of going forward with a special town meeting pursuant to a 200-voter petition. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
No, ma'am.
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you need to notarize this, Karen, so we can sign it now? Yes. Okay. The state holiday?
Lucky 13.
So I wasn't present at the last meeting, this came up, and, so just to move forward, the, the state does observe the holiday on June 9, well, observes the June 19 holiday. If it falls on a Saturday, it's observed on a Friday. If it falls on a Sunday, it's observed on a Monday. I did a little bit of research, and Amherst will be celebrating, but they will be celebrating on Saturday, June 19. Other, other towns that are recognizing it, Worcester, I found, you know, Worcester will be doing an event, but as far as this area, the only thing I found was Amherst. I am aware that other municipalities are considering this, and, but they are holding off, they're not doing anything this year. They do, they'll do it for next year.
I mean, I'm, you know, I know state offices are closed Friday? I mean, it's a state holiday, so I'm, I'm okay with, with doing it this year. It kind of came up, it's been confusing originally, I, because I inquired for another reason, was told it would be observed Monday, and then it's changed, it's been sort of a confusing rollout of this. You know, but it's a state holiday.
And we talked about it at our last meeting, Marlene. I, I agree with Diana, I certainly don't have a problem this year having, you know, observing it this Friday, in three days. We know what kind of last minute, but we had held off purposely to try to get more information, which you provided us, so thank you. I think in the bigger picture of things, though, from an HR, so I'm fine with this year, I think that we, I think we need to look at our HR policy and the amount of, of holidays, and, and just have a look at them and, and see if, if there's a better way that we could perhaps, I don't know, going forward, you know, from a, from a, from a business perspective, see where we could maybe have some flexibility in making some, maybe make some changes, maybe not change anything. Where I'm going with all this is, years ago, the company I worked at, we were up to like 13 or 14 holidays, and, and they said, kind of, wait a second, we just, every time, a holiday is, and people should be able to celebrate it, by the way, let me, let me be perfectly clear about that. But some holidays seem to be more important to certain people than other holidays seem to be important to other people. So they sort of said, okay, out of these, let's just say, I'm making this up now, but out of, you have 13, you're going to get these eight, you know, New Year's, July 4th. These five, you can pick two or three, or whatever. So, so you kind of get a choice out of some of them that might not be considered the bigger holidays, you know what I mean? And, and again, holidays mean something different to, to many people, so. So it still allowed people the flexibility if they wanted to observe a particular holiday, but it also helped the business, or in this case, the town or the municipality, by not always being, appearing to be closed often, because everybody has, however many holidays we're up to now. So my point being, I think we should look at the HR policy on a go-forward basis and see if there's anything we may or may not want to change. As far as Juneteenth for this year, I have no problem having, for Friday, to have our town employees...
It's very late notice.
It is late notice.
For people to have the day off, and I, so just to what Brian was saying, I, I would, I disagree, because I think the, the holidays that we observe are state or federal holidays, and I, the public sector and the private sector are very different. So it's not necessarily fair to compare the two, and I, I think that the holidays that our town employees get off are completely appropriate, and I wouldn't want to entertain taking... off are completely appropriate, and I wouldn't want to entertain taking any away. I don't think that it's, they're excessive. I think that they're, you know, the normal expected holidays, Veterans Day and all those other things. So I guess I, we can certainly have a discussion, but I, I wouldn't be in favor of reducing the number of holidays. But in terms of this one, I guess I would throw out there that because, you know, I, I think that they should have it off, it's, it's an important holiday to recognize, but it is late notice. It might be hard for people, now they might have things scheduled for Friday.
I know Council on Aging does, they have appointments and some events scheduled.
They do, and so, maybe for this year, we could give employees a little bit of flexibility. If they want to take Friday off, they can, but maybe we give it as a floater with a very short timeframe to use. How's that? Would that work from a payroll perspective?
I'd use it by June 30.
Okay, so, okay, so that seems fair.
That's reasonable.
Okay.
That's right.
Two weeks.
It's the fiscal year.
I would encourage employees to take the day itself, but if you have a very specific reason, because it's such late notice, we will offer that flexibility. How's that?
Makes sense.
Does that make sense to you? For this year only. It's not going to be a flexible floating holiday typically. I think the, the fact that it's new this year and falls on a Saturday has made this extra confusing. So, that would be my, what I think would work best for employees and, you know, their potential workflow. Meetings they already have scheduled, deadlines they have, and they didn't know until Tuesday or Wednesday morning, that they're getting the day off on Friday. That just might not be reasonable. So can I make a motion that we begin observing Juneteenth this year? The day off will be given as June 18, with employees having the flexibility to use it this year only as a floater, but used by June 30?
Okay. That's fine. I mean, there was conversation of whether this holiday should be one that's used for negotiations, but it is a state holiday, so I don't know if you can, because then you're only negotiating with union employees, and you're, you're not negotiating with non-union employees, but blah, 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 so, I mean-
Like, we would never consider using Veterans Day or-
Right.
President's Day as a negotiable contract item, so what, why would we consider using this as a, you know, I guess is my point.
I mean, but we-
Well, we didn't bring it up, the, the union brought it up, but, yeah.
That's fine, okay.
But that's kind of what got us all going, what, you know, what is that?
We're like, what is that?
Yeah, right. It, it, there hasn't been a lot, I've been actually looking for information on it for, because we, at work, we have a chamber event on that day that we scheduled, because we originally were told it wasn't the observation of that day, and so now I'm looking for some, some, you know, really solid information to at least incorporate it into what we're doing, so.
Well, there's a difference between federal holidays and state holidays, too, so I mean, that's another, that's another discussion at another time.
The other thing about this particular holiday this year, because it's all kind of, I mean, the whole country's talking about it, if you read what's highlighted in yellow from Marlene, it says Saturday holidays are observed on Saturday.
That's what it says.
So, so that doesn't help our town employees, which I get, so I'm still fine with Friday, but I noticed that the library has a sign saying, they will be closed Saturday in observance of Juneteenth. So, I guess it's probably more to follow and get into the swing of things.
That's what I was saying, for the first year, for the first year to have it happen to be on a Saturday has just kind of added to the-
Yeah, right.
Yeah, okay.
So we're good with that.
We're good. Did we actually take the vote?
I think we, I think we-
All those in favor?
We made a motion, and there was a second, so.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that was a very long-
We got there.
Long way to get, get here. So, Marlene, it looks like we got through our agenda, with the exception of heading into an executive session?
Correct. And following that, the Select Board will reorganize, so you'll have to reconvene.
Okay, what about these?
Oh, that is-
Peters.
For MBZ Inc., Smithsonian Chowder House. So the board approved their, their application, and then the state approved, so all you need to do is sign the license, yeah. Doesn't need to-
This is the actual license.
We can do the reorganization now.
You could, I was just going to suggest, if you'd like to do that now, and then you don't need to reconvene.
What about the change order? Phil, do we need to do the change order?
Oh, there's another one?
There's a change order here?
That's the one that I left in your box.
Oh, and I was told to give it back to you.
I was going to sign. I'm going to sign.
You are? I thought you had signed it. That's why I asked you if you could-
So this is not for us? Okay.
Oh, okay.
And this is for Karen.
That is for you to sign.
Yeah, that's the one I was asking about.
I'll take that for the signature. Oh, Karen has to notarize it, okay. Okay, all right.
Okay, so then-
Board reorganization.
Yep. So I'd be happy to support either Ed or Diana to be the chair, whatever you guys want to do.
Well, I'd, I'd just like to say, as far as I'm concerned, I think the chair should have strong speaking skills, and I think you two guys have strong speaking skills.
I'm going to take that as a compliment.
Aren't you suggesting they're loud?
If either one of you want the chair, I will take it, but other than that, I would support Diane continuing, because I think this board has been working very well. Why reinvent the wheel? If things are going well, keep it the way it's going. That's the way, that's what I see.
I am happy to remain chair, unless you have a burning desire to come back to the middle seat.
Absolutely not, thank you very much. And Ed, thanks for the compliment, but I will, I will nominate Diana Zinal to be the chairman of the-
I'll second that.
Board of Select Board.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Go get them, Tiger.
Okay.
Okay. I will make a motion to go into executive session under Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 1, to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, excuse me, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of, or complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual, and not return to open session.
I will second that, and Jaworski, aye.
Moriarty, aye.
Zinal, aye.
John, thank you.